Good evening, I'll call to order the workshop for the Arvada City Council for June 10th, 2019. Call upon Kristen Rush. For roll call, no?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Tonight, we have one workshop item and it's an update on the Land Development Code. It's a joint meeting between the Arvada City Council and members of the Planning Commission. Appreciate you, Planning Commission members, being here. Thank you. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have Planning Manager Rob Sumitana start this presentation.
All right. Good evening. We're here for yet another one of our updates for the Land Development Code, but we're getting near the end, so that's the good news. So, a few topics that we'll touch base on tonight. A little bit about what we heard from our last open house in April and our last advisory committee in May. We'll talk a little bit about the mixed-use districts and some of the heights were heights we are looking at. We'll give you an overview of Module Three, which is kind of the last big module of the code. Give you an idea of some of the design standards for the MX districts that we're looking at, and then do a quick confirmation of the short-term rental regulations, although we will also have a workshop specifically on that topic coming up as well. So, just where we are in the process, we are, as I mentioned, getting close to the end. We still plan on having a draft of the code to present to council and planning commission at a workshop in August, on August 26th, and we hope to then be able to go into an open house with the community in September and then go through the adoption phase early next year. We have gone through the proposed zone districts in the past, and we did get confirmation and believe, we believe we had consensus on the palette of districts based on what we heard from the advisory committee and what we heard at the public open house. And we do have a couple of tweaks that we've made since then that we'll go through, but generally, this is the palette of districts that we're going to be moving forward with. Residential districts, the residential neighborhood, which will primarily be used in the existing city where we have a lot of PUDs today. The R6 through R24 would be greenfield locations or possibly a few redevelopment locations. And then the MX districts would generally be where we have commercial districts or commercial PUDs today. The general commercial would be somewhat limited district in use. Would be the only commercial district that would only allow commercial uses. And then Old Town will basically stay the same. We've got a couple of industrial districts, very similar to our I-1 and I-2 today, and then a planned unit development district. So, a couple of things we heard from our open house and our advisory committee meeting where there were a couple of tweaks to be made in some of the regulations that we proposed. The first one is in the MXS, which is the mixed-use suburban district, we heard that it might be appropriate to look at raising the height from the 35-foot that was originally proposed to a 45-foot height limit. And that was based on conversations we had about kind of the modern building and construction techniques. And that's generally what you need to have to have a standard three-story commercial office building.
Can I ask you a quick question, Rob?
Sure.
So, one of the things that I know we do is we measure our heights from the ground to the midpoint of the pitch of the roof. Is that the widely accepted way that you measure height, or are we unique in doing it that way?
We are not unique. That's one of the techniques, and quite a few communities use that.
What are some of the other ones?
Some other communities go to the peak, the highest peak of a roof. For commercial structures, we're pretty similar to everybody else where we actually measure just to the roof deck.
Flat roof, yeah.
Of a commercial structure.
Right, okay.
Yeah, those are generally the two types you see, either the midpoint or the highest peak.
Right. Would 45 feet, MXS means mixed-use suburban, so it could be residential, right?
Yes, correct.
So, would that allow anybody to build four stories of residential if they put a pretty steep peaked roof on it?
You could potentially get a four-story residential structure in that, yes.
And would there be any, you know, if the wisdom of this is to allow with, you know, modern type of construction, to allow three full stories of commercial-type construction, would there be any asterisk added, would there be any wisdom in adding an asterisk to that, 45 feet, except not to allow four-story residential only?
We could certainly look at that option, although from what you'd see on the outside, other than counting the floors, it would be the same height.
Well, except, except it's not, though. Really, if you have a 45 feet to the midpoint of the slope of the roof, the peak of it could be 60 feet.
Right.
Where if you've got more of a, if you picture more commercial construction that are typically flat roofs or very low-slope roofs, 45 feet, you're 45 feet to the top of that slope, you don't have another 10 or 15 or however much peak poking above that.
Yeah, I was, I was actually thinking of 45-foot building, four stories with a flat roof. You, you might still potentially be able to squeeze four stories in a gabled or hipped roof, but it would be, it would be probably tighter to do that.
Right, right. Well, I guess I'd get more at the intent of, if we're looking at that, is the intent in that mixed-use suburban district, is the intent to have, you know, three full stories of robust commercial construction or three stories of residential? Or is the intent actually to have four stories of residential if it's got some room under the, under the pitch of the roof?
Sure, and we'd be open to either, actually. I think we were just worried about making sure that a commercial structure could be built to the proper height.
Right. So, something like 45-foot maximum building height, except not to include four stories of finished residential space, could be a qualifier added on to kind of accomplish that?
Sure. I guess the only other caveat might be if we did get a true mixed-use building, would that be acceptable to have, you know, if you had one floor of commercial?
One floor of commercial and then three floors of residential.
Possibly. And again, that would probably be pretty tight, given that you usually end up with like a 15-foot first floor.
I guess for me, my, my question would just be, and maybe it's for the rest of council, not to staff, would be, what, what would our intent be there? You know, and the height ought to be, height and the way it's measured ought to be to achieve whatever that intent is. So, if we intend for that to be four stories, we can put a height, a height or a way of measuring height that clearly allows four stories. If our intention is for it to be three stories, we should have either a way of measuring the height or a height that, that allows, you know, what our intent is, not just putting something out there and, and having builders respond however they want, you know. Anyway, something to think about. We might, we might put a note on that and have a further discussion about that at some point.
We'll do.
So, John, under the height transition zone, would that take care of what you're asking about, or?
No, that's a totally different, different issue. I think it's just, you know, our current, in this, in, in the equivalent zone district to this now, we have a 35-feet height limit to the midpoint of the pitch of the roof, which if we talk about expanding that 10 more feet, you'd be adding one, you essentially could potentially add one more, one more story to the building. And if that's our intention, then fine, we should do that. But if our intention really is just to allow, you know, higher ceiling height commercial construction of three stories, that's fine, too. This, this way gets that. But if our intention isn't to allow four full floors of finished residential space in this zone district, we ought to either accept that out or pick a height number or a way of measuring the height that doesn't allow that. So, it's really just what our intent is. If our intent is to allow, we should allow it. If our intent is not, we should not.
I guess my question, is there demand for a higher height?
We have seen more buildings beyond the typical three-story kind of suburban model. We have seen more robust structures showing up in the metro area, even in suburban locations.
So, are we talking townhomes or condos, or are we talking single-family residences? If, I can't envision too many single-family, four-story residences.
No, I think what we're talking about is, is multifamily, either for sale or rental.
Okay.
But one thing we could look at, to maybe, to get to your point, Mr. Marriott, is maybe in the MX districts, we could measure differently.
Right.
So, if, if the, if we want to make sure that it doesn't exceed that 45 feet regardless of the stories, we could talk about in the MX districts, you know, having a, measured to the top of the roof line or the roof deck.
Right, okay.
Okay. Another comment we heard was about the residential agriculture district and the need to look at barns a little differently than we have in the past. And we heard a couple of people tell us that a 35-foot barn is kind of your typical height for a barn these days. And again, this is to the peak. And so, we had originally proposed 30, and we had heard that maybe 35 was a more appropriate height for barns. And this is only in the RA district. We don't have a lot of potential RA district out there, so it would not impact a large area of the, the community.
And that is to the peak on that, not to the midpoint?
That would be to the peak, yes. And then the other piece we heard in the RA zone was originally, we talked about front or side and rear setbacks being 30 and 25 feet. And a question was raised, if you're adjacent to another RA property, can you have a reduced setback? It just allows you to have more room to do what you need. And this is where we allow predominantly animals and some, you know, hobby-scale farming. And so, we looked at the idea of, or recommending the idea of allowing a 15-foot setback when you're adjacent to another RA property. If you're adjacent to any other zone district, you'd still have to maintain that 30 or 25 feet. All right, then, the height transition zone, this is one we talked about the last time, and there were a couple of different models that we looked at, and we kind of went with a hybrid model. One is our, our existing bulk plane, which basically takes a 45-degree angle, and you can, as you go back every foot, your building can be a foot taller. That can be a little confusing as you're trying to figure out exactly what height you can achieve. So, we took that bulk plane, the 45-degree angle, started it at a six-foot height, a six-foot fence, and then, then projected if you were in the MXN, which would have a 35-foot height limit, how far back you need to be based on that bulk plane in order to achieve the adjacent height of the adjacent residential district. And so, basically, in the MXN, you'd have to be back 25 feet from the property line before you could increase your height beyond the 28 feet that would be allowed in a residential district. For the MXS, going up to that 45 feet, you need to be 30 feet back. And then in the MXU or MXT, you need to be 45 feet back before you could go higher than the adjacent residential district.
Just a quick question on that, real quick.
Yeah.
How many, how many zoning districts do we have where we're going to be bumping up against the residential and this potential use?
It will probably happen, a majority of the locations where we have the MX zoning.
So, the one I'm, the area I'm thinking of specifically is over where, like, Easter Owens, is that, is that an example of where this?
Yeah, actually, that would be, that would be the CG zone or an I-1 zone versus a mixed-use zone.
Okay. Thank you. I was just trying to picture it in my mind.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about where the MX zones will be located here in just a second. So, we have, have four MX zones. The mixed-use neighborhood, which is in, for all intent and purposes, the least impactful district with a 35-foot height limit. And it would basically be used as a transition where we have residential really close to fairly small commercial project or commercial parcels today. So, think Ralston Road, fairly small commercial properties along Ralston and residential directly behind those. That's the area we're, we're considering mixed-use neighborhood. Mixed-use suburban, again, the 45-foot height, this would be an area where we get a mid-range of density of residential. The MXU, which would be our urban, which would generally be located along arterial streets where we have existing commercial zoning, so Sheridan, Wadsworth, 64th. And then the mixed-use transit, we, would be at our transit location, so at the Sheridan Station, south of the Old Town Station, Kipling Station, or Kipling Ridge, sorry. Oh, and for the mixed-use urban, we did say a 60-foot height with a potential for up to 80 feet. Now, when we're talking, when we're talking about the 80 feet, we're talking about if there are additional amenities or possibly even affordable housing involved with it. And we need to figure out exactly what those potential incentives could be for additional height, but that's where we were thinking that if there was affordable housing involved with it or attainable housing that we can quantify, that may be a reason to allow some additional height.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, let me, let me ask a question about that. And again, I guess I would get that intent of, of the council. Is that something you would come to us with a discussion about what those things might be that, that council would decide what those are and not that it just becomes whatever somebody, somebody thinks it is?
Right. We would want to have it fairly, fairly objective in the code as to what would qualify for that.
And, and what things, you said affordable housing is one of them. What other things might qualify you to be able to build, you know, because 80 feet is seven stories, you know, seven, seven-ish?
Six, six, seven, yeah. So, that potentially amenities that the residents could use in terms of pools and courtyards and things that would take pressure off of public facilities, potentially. So, maybe that can replace parks that may or may not be present in the, in the community. Possibly even dedication of land for public purposes if we needed it. And there's a palette of options that we're still trying to figure out what that could be, and we will definitely come back to you with those.
Right. And, and you're talking about that being just written into the zoning code so that that could be done administratively by the, by the city staff, as opposed to, we do that now with our PUD.
PUDs, correct.
Zoning. So, this would be to kind of avoid each development being a PUD, but, but yet, city council wouldn't weigh in on it. It would be, you know, if it, it'd be a use-by-right, essentially.
Correct.
If the sta, if staff figured it was okay to make that trade or that exchange or get that.
Right. But again, we, we want to make sure it's, it's very objective, so it's clear what would have to be required so that council has to buy off on what all those items would be. So, if somebody came in with those items, we would know that that would be okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I think, I think until, it's cart before the horse to have the discussion of this until we have the discussion of that.
Right, and we just wanted to flag that.
I, I understand.
And we may get to a point where you, Planning Commission, city council say, no, that's just not where we want to go, and we'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, I agree with John on that. I also worry about the MXT transit. I know the height hasn't been decided, but I think what, what raises some flags on that particular one is the half-mile from rail and frequent bus service. Does that include, like, Ralston Road?
No. Well, right now, the frequent bus service we have is just along Wadsworth, essentially. We don't really have anything.
So, half-mile into the neighborhoods along Wadsworth?
Correct. But we, we've got a map that I'll give you a little more detail on kind of the thoughts behind that.
Yeah, I want to be sensitive around the Ward because of the impacts of saying, well, you know, the height could be 120 feet now, and that's predominantly a residential community with some industrial.
Right. At this point in time, we aren't proposing anything for Ward Road other than just working to transition the zoning that's in that area. So, really, the only piece we have that's within half a mile of Ward Road, they're already either all residential, there's Haskins Station, which you've already approved, and other than that, it's pretty much Wheat Ridge.
And south of Ridge Road is what, industrial for now?
Correct. And that, that you recently approved, the industrial or light industrial flex office projects on that parcel.
Okay.
All right. So, again, just to kind of give you an idea, map-wise, our, our conceptual locations for the various mixed-use districts. So, again, the most, the least intense, the smallest scale would be the MXN, the neighborhood. And we're looking generally along Ralston Road, basically, you know, kind of between Old Town and Independence, and then the diagonal portion of, of Ralston Road up to 64th. And then there are four or five little parcels or little nodes throughout the city that are currently zoned some type of commercial develop, for some type of commercial development. We would transition those to the MXN. So, really, that does not have much of an impact based on the existing zoning to the proposed MXN zoning. They all basically have the same parameters today. The next one would be the suburban, and that's going to be at, you know, areas along 64th. We've got a node around Garrison and 52nd where Hector's is. We've got some locations up along Indiana, north of 86th, that could potentially be suburban, and a few areas along Kipling at around 72nd and around 80th and Kipling. For the urban, that's primarily along Wadsworth and a little bit in the Ralston Fields area at Independence and Ralston, and then potentially a little bit to the east of the Wadsworth and I-70 intersection, just south of the things that are now Clear Creek or the industrial area. We may also have, and it's not shown on this map, we didn't quite have enough room to get it on there, but there may be a couple of nodes along Sheridan as well, 64th.
Great. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah.
So, there's a couple, a couple of things about this particular, this MXU, that, that screams out to me. One is the one there around Ralston Fields, because potentially that could allow 80-plus feet of, of, of building height there. And it seems to me that that one is a little bit out of place. I totally understand it at I-70 and Wadsworth where it's in the midst of pretty dense commercial development, and even up at 88th and Wadsworth and 88th and Wadsworth, 80th and 88th, because those are kind of pretty intense commercial nodes along a major north-south thoroughfare. But you get there into the corner there of Ralston Road there around the Ralston Fields area, and, and that area to me is very different than the potential places it could be along Wadsworth. And so, to me, that seems way out of place. The other thing then is I would expect to see that mixed-use urban maybe up there near the King Supers at Candela's where it's currently not. Like, that's one of those places, while it's not necessarily one of those heavy, one of those pretty dense commercial nodes at this point, I think our vision is for it to be that at some point, particularly when you've got the Jefferson Parkway going through there, Indiana State Highway 72, you know, you've got kind of the, the road network that speaks to that MXU district. So, I think if we're looking ahead, I would prefer to see that MXU district there, but there's no way I could see that being there along Ralston Road at Independence because to me, it's just such, so different in character in any, in every other way from where that's kind of intended to be.
Sure. A couple of things. First of all, I should have mentioned earlier that we didn't show anything in the Candela's area at this point because we're going to have a more robust conversation with the ownership up there to determine how we can transition that area, because they do have approval for 120-foot heights up there, I think even 180-foot heights.
Well, just on this map, it's orange up there.
That is actually, there's a couple of parcels, yeah, okay, yeah. We did include the King Supers, but not the rest of Candela's yet, which we still want to have that conversation with them.
Yep.
And then with the Ralston Fields, the reason why we looked at the, the MXU in that area is the urban renewal plan for that area does actually talk about five-to-six-story buildings. And we also have the Arvada House that already exists there, which is about 80 feet tall. So, that's kind of the thought process behind that piece.
Right. I, I understand that. I just think that if you take that out of, that one thing out of the context, which is the Arvada House building that's been there for decades now, if you take that out of the context, there's nothing about it, whether it's the transportation network, the road network around it, not on, not really on major north side. I mean, there's just no other characteristic that would lead you to, to, to allow 80-foot-tall buildings there, you know. I mean, I think, I think as we've had preliminary discussions about that, we've been even a little averse to, I mean, it's, it's uncomfortable to talk about 50-foot buildings there. It'd really be uncomfortable to start talking about 80-foot buildings there. And again, we're talking about making this a use-by-right, where someone, a developer can come into the staff and make their case and gain approval from the, from the staff and go do it without there being much public, you know, no public hearing, no PUD process by which there's more robust kind of, kind of input from the community. So, again, to me, I, I'd have huge heartburn with that one.
I guess what I would do is, because I think there is a portion of the Ralston Creek, it's Ralston Creek now, not Ralston Fields.
Right.
That would work with the, with the higher height, particularly next to where the, the Ralston House is there.
Right.
But I would shrink that. Certainly, the developments that are being proposed at the old Chuck E. Cheese location and the old Safeway location are not going to be built to that height. And so, I would take those kinds of things out of it and, and maybe shrink that, that MXU district to a smaller footprint where we think that it might be compat, or where it would be compatible for some taller buildings.
So, basically, kind of anything, the portion west of Independence, kind of the King, the Kmart, King Supers area?
Right. Yeah. And tell me, is it true that even, I know now virtually all the development we get ends up being, they all become, they're all PUDs, planned unit developments of one type or another. And I understand that the, the, the attempt here is to probably, is to reduce that some, but that, that process will still exist. So, if somebody wants to develop something that's outside the allowed zoning, they can apply for a PUD. They're just required to be bringing something else to the table to, to get something different than the rules allow, so.
Yes. And we would also.
Even if we don't expressly allow it, it doesn't mean it couldn't happen. It would just have to happen as part of a PUD as opposed to straight zone.
Either a PUD or we still propose to keep the height exception language in the code as well, and that would be something that would come to council as well. So, there could be two different options to approach that. All right. And then finally, the, the MXT districts. Again, those are just focused on our rail stations. We did not include Ward Road since that's predominantly in Wheat Ridge. So, it would just be at Kipling Ridge, which right now is essentially built out around the Old Town Station and more specifically, the Newtown area, south of Old Town. And then the Sheridan area, which we still need to take a look at because the original transit area plan talked about that being more of an employment, light industrial area. So, we haven't quite figured out what zone district to, to put at that location. So, we've kind of just focused really on the Newtown area, south of the tracks at Wadsworth. And that's where I would like to get into a little bit more detail with you on some of the heights that we looked at. Just to give you a, a little bit of background, we did look at the station area framework plan, and that in certain areas talked about allowing up to six-story buildings for the area kind of south of the station and a little bit to the, to the east of the station where Solana went today. But there are still a few parcels over there that have some redevelopment potential. Although, it did talk about allowing up to six stories where the views are being preserved. And so, we did take a look at the, the views that are off the station platform and tried to look at where it seemed appropriate to have potentially taller buildings. And this is also based on some of the discussions that came out of the Urban Land Institute TAP, Technical Advisory Panel that we had a couple of months ago. And we're still waiting for the re- And we're still waiting for the report on that, but when we had the presentation from the group that looked at this area, south of Old Town, they thought it might be an appropriate location, and the economics are such that taller buildings could potentially look to be developed in that area. So we wanted to take that into consideration while still being mindful of views from the station platform. So you've got a map in front of you that's a little easier to read, I hope, as part of your packet, because I know the slide is really difficult to see. But we took a look at, and let me also show you one other thing we did, we did a couple of things. We got some topo maps out and tried to look at kind of what the topography is out there, the changes in elevation. We also, as I mentioned, went to the station platform, kind of looked to see what was out there, and all these great apps that are out there for phones these days, you can kind of pinpoint where certain elements on the horizon are. So you've also got this in your packet as well, but it gives you an idea, standing on the station platform, where kind of the view to the mountains is. So you can, you can see the peaks, everything from Pike's Peak north kind of until you get to Bear Mountain, and then you can, just for scale, you can see the Hilton Garden Inn kind of in the middle of that picture, off on the horizon, and you can see the Flower Mill, to give you kind of a context. And off on the far left-hand side, you can actually see the top of the Harkins Theater, the little red roof piece of the Harkins Theater, just to kind of get, give you an idea of scale. And then the other one you have is kind of the eastern side of that view from the platform, where you can see downtown, kind of a little off to the left of the center of that photo. So we took a look at those views, and then we, based on the topography, looked at where, what building heights may or may not be appropriate. So if you're looking from the station platform, kind of south and to the west, is where we really want to try and preserve those views, where you have the best views of the mountains, that you'd have that view that you see in the slide there. And so that's where we were looking at, saying 45-foot is the maximum height. And so that would basically be the top of the movie theater. So any building that would be there would be about the tree line that you can see in the photo. Then as you move a little farther south, around the Lowes parcel, given the topography, you could go a little higher, and so we were looking at 65 feet there, and then kind of 65 feet all along the western edge of Wadsworth. And that would, again, kind of preserve those views of the mountains. As you start to rotate a little bit to the east from that view, is the area that we looked at at potentially 80 feet, which is kind of around the Arvada Connection, where the Carpet Exchange building is, the Wells Fargo Bank down on 52nd, and then the highest area would be that area around the, or essentially encompassing the Arvada Marketplace, which would be looking at 120 feet. And that's kind of the maximum height that was recommended outside, out of the ULI TAP panel discussion. And to put that in perspective, you really can't see, on the photo, but where, kind of where it talks about inspiration point on the one where you can see downtown Denver, that's where the signs are for the Arvada Marketplace, which are actually 80 feet tall and actually sit on a little bit of a rise behind the shopping center, which puts them at about 90 feet. And they, you can't, they don't reach the, the treetops of that view on the horizon. So 120 feet would just be at those treetops on the horizon at that distance from the station platform. So that's kind of a little bit of background for the heights that are recommended there.
Mr. Marriott.
Do we, thanks. Do we look at mass as well when we're looking at the heights? Because, you know, obviously, a, a building that's, I don't know, I'm, I'm not good with footage, so, you know, half a block or a quarter of a block is going to, and tall is going to be much a bigger, much different than looking at a building that's a whole block and, you know, the same height, 120 feet or whatever. In terms of blocking views, do we look at it from that proportion of mass and height instead of just height alone?
Sure, and we'll have to look at, again, some more of the design elements for a parcel, but if it's a parcel like, let's say, the Lowes parcel, which is fairly large, but again, that's kind of an area where we're only talking 65 feet, but we would probably want to see some additional roadway connectivity through a parcel like that if it were to redevelop. So that's going to start to split up the amount of building area and the, the mass of those buildings that you'd have in those areas. So that would help with that. Instead of having one big mass of building, you'd have kind of several smaller buildings.
Okay.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so I want to talk about the, the three little separate zone districts along Grand View that are east of the Wadsworth bypass.
Yeah.
So the middle one, where the max height's 45, that's where Salon, Old Town is now, and I think there's a couple of individual residences in there, maybe that new stuff could be.
There are kind of on that far eastern side, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we've, 45 there, and that's, of course, already built, so there's not probably a lot of changes that would happen there, but I know one of the things there that, and is applicable to all three of these parcels are, that all of them have a big grade change from north to south. And so building, whether it's 45 feet or 65 feet down on the lower elevation part, the further south part of it, is far different than building 45 or 65 feet if it's up on the top part that's adjacent to the railroad tracks. But yet, you know, there's got to be some way of being a little more deliberate about that, because I, I look particularly at the parcel where the storage place is now, and I know the, the, it, it seems that that may never redevelop or may stay the same or whatnot, but things like that could change, and for someone to, if, if we adopted this just as is, someone could come in with a plan that builds a building up on the top, on the top part adjacent to the railroad tracks, it's 65 feet tall, which would be a giant change from anything else that's along Grand View. Now, 65 feet might very well be applicable if they built it on the south part of those, that same parcel where they're down at the bottom of the hill, you know, when they're starting 25 feet lower, then it works. So I don't know, how do, how do we address that with this code, again, without making everything into a PUD, but how do we address that to not end up with something we don't intend to end up with?
Sure. Well, primarily, we're looking at the fact that if, if there is a grade change, it does give you benefit, as you sort of mentioned, to the bottom of that grade or the lower point of that grade in it, and kind of restricts you at the, the upper end of that grade. And so even though it might be a 65-foot building on a slope, at the upper slope, just like with Old Town residences, where it's, you know, three stories up at the top and six at the bottom, it would be that same kind of effect on this parcel as well.
But how do you, how do you ensure that someone doesn't put the 65-foot structure on the north end of that parcel, saying, well, you know, hey, that's my use by right to have 65 feet anywhere on this parcel?
Right.
Something we can definitely take a look at.
Yeah, because I, I understand where Mr. Marriott's coming from, that yes, you know, if, if they're building where we think they're going to build, and, and we can be okay with it, but if somebody comes along and, and does something different, then, you know, it's, I know that Golden is dealing with this right now, where the old courthouse used to be, there's talk of putting up like an 80-foot structure there for, for the government, and I think the neighborhood's going to go crazy, and I think we'd have the same situation here, so.
Yeah, I think that's, we can definitely look at that. I think we're also, we were also looking at it from the standpoint that the access is going to be from 56th at the bottom of the hill, because you really don't have great access at the top of the hill. So it seems like it would kind of force everything to the bottom of the hill.
But in a, in a.
But we can definitely look at that.
In a multi-building development, if someone were to take that whole parcel and build different buildings, you measure the building from the ground it's set in, not from, not, not over the whole parcel, so you could have, you know, several buildings down below, and you could have several buildings on top, and even if the access is from the south side, you still can end up with a 65-foot building. So anyway, I would suggest to you that particularly, when you look at those three zone districts there along Grand View, on the south side of Grand View, east of, east of the bypass, that at least the two that are undeveloped, that maybe those are places that are just specified to be PUD-zoned districts, and, and that, that because of the, the very nature of them and the, the difficulty in probably putting it into a straight zone district with the top of the hill versus the bottom of the hill, that, that, that we, I don't know if that's the right answer, but there's got to be some other answer besides. Again, I think the object, my look at all these is to avoid something, an unintentional consequence, something unintentional happening there. So one other one within these, these Old Town ones, so the, the south of the Park and Ride area where we've got a max height of 45 on the, the east side of Vance Street, so my only suggestion would be, I don't see really the, the need for that, that, that if, if the, the, the old Park and Ride site is, is applicable for 65, directly south of there ought to be applicable to 65 feet as well, because when you get down to the Lowes, it's applicable for 65 feet. So I, I think those things could be connected, you know, there could be additional height there. I understand the one on the east side of the Wadsworth bypass only being 45, because that directly interfaces with the neighborhood, and so that shouldn't be 65 feet, but the, but that, that that little piece in there, east of the Harkins Theater probably ought to be, it'd be my suggestion anyway. And I know that's mostly developed, but these things may redevelop at some point in the future and seems more appropriate.
Okay. All right, let me go back a few slides here. Okay, so next we want to get into a quick discussion on what is included in Module Three.
Before you do that, I'm going to ask if Planning Commission members have any questions or comments on what we've talked about up to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott. Yeah, it's, the height issue is huge, and it's very, very easy to come up with a number that sounds great and then end up with a skyscraper in the wrong part of town. So I think that it's really important, we'd be very careful, especially along Grand View. It's called Grand View for a reason, and, and we owe it to Arvada to make sure that nothing impacts that.
I certainly agree with those comments, and then I actually had a question about what we talked about earlier. Is there a distinction between a barn and a garage? So could I have a 35-foot garage? I guess is my question.
No, there, we do distinguish the two in the code. We talk about the characteristics of a barn, primarily housing animals and equipment geared towards farming.
So four-legged mustangs, not four-wheel mustangs?
Correct.
Got it. Anything else from?
I had just agreed with what he said, but also, I think the grade change is very important. Oftentimes, we say we can fit this type of building in, but if it changes the whole part greatly, then it might not be proper for that area.
Great. Very good, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so Module Three is primarily the section on the process, and so pretty much it's all the same that we have in, in our code today, with a few little tweaks here and there. One of those that we are kind of looking at is, within the RN district, which is primarily our developed residential areas today, we wanted to give a little bit of flexibility in those districts. And one of the things that we've kind of been looking at is, well, first of all, to say, if there are any non-conformities that are created, which is, are things that would be allowed under the previous zoning but not under this zoning, and this is a little awkward in, in this sense, but anything that would be non-conforming, we're saying in the RN zoning, at the adoption of the code, would just become conforming. So if it's a little off on setbacks, we'd say that is the approved setback for that particular lot or that particular area. And so there wouldn't be any confusion or any issues when somebody's looking at refinancing or buying a property, and, you know, sometimes that non-conforming status raises some questions with lenders. We want to make sure that's kind of taken off the table. The other thing is, again, about the expansion of a building that might be in that situation, again, primarily residential, but we wanted to look at allowing some flexibility in that to say, if you're supposed to have a 15-foot side yard setback and you have a 12-foot side yard setback just because of the way it was developed, we wanted to allow some expansion possibility for that particular property at that existing setback. So we're proposing that it would be allowed to have a 20% footprint expansion at that, let's say, 12-foot setback, rather than requiring a jog to get to the now 15-foot setback. And that's something we seem to have gotten consensus across the board in discussions, and just wanted to see if you felt the same way on that.
I don't see any questions, so.
All right. Sounds good. All right, and then in terms of the process, we've basically taken all the routes to approval that we have today and tried to consolidate them a little bit, give them a little more structure, and put them into what we call tracks, which just makes it a little easier to put in a table form so people can understand what their process is as they're going through a development project. And so you, as part of your packet, you do have those more extensive tables that kind of explain those tracks. But basically, of the seven tracks, they're very similar to what we have today. Track one are, you know, administrative items that are fairly small in nature, that staff takes care of today. So that would be like minor modifications, things like that, but also, in this instance, site plans that we have today, again, site plans in a standard zoning with the potential adoption of the code would still be approved at the staff level. There may be instances where things need to go to Planning Commission, and so those are outlined as a track two, and one example of that is the alternative sign program that we have today. That just goes to Planning Commission and does not come to council for approval. That would be what would go into a track two. A track three, there are some other items that maybe we wanted, that the Planning Commission can, can handle. We have a track four, which are things that only go to council, and that's like development or annexation agreements, revocable licenses, things like that that take council action, but they, they just come directly to you. Track five would be very similar to what we have today for, for most of our processes, where it would go to the Planning Commission, and then the council would make the decision. We today have a floodplain administrator, which is that track six, that process stays the same. And then track seven is the Board of Adjustment process. So really, all of these tracks we have in some form in our code today, we just tried to make it a little easier to understand for somebody submitting an application, what track they go through.
Ms. Spiver.
Yeah, clarity on that track two, so I'd go to the Planning Commission for the public hearing first, and then the director would make the final decision after that public hearing?
Correct, and that's because we've, we found a stipulation in our charter that says that the Planning Commission is only a fact-finding body, not a decision-making body, so we had to do a little tweaking to make that work with the city charter. So that's that proposed piece.
And that applies to number three too, since the decision-maker is a planning commission?
That, we're, we're seeing if, there may be some things that happen in there, and maybe, and we've heard discussions about, every 10 years we look at updating the city charter, and so there may be a possibility of, of doing that. But if not, track three would likely disappear and things would become track two, or depending on the scope, it could be track two or track five.
Mr. McGough.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on your comment about the city charter, since we will be starting that process within the next year or so, with the actual, the final review being in 2021. Is this a question that you might be posing to the council, to see if the council wants to take a look at that?
charter provision?
Yeah, we have put it on the radar as that goes through the process.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure, now is the time to start thinking about those questions that would be reviewed at, at the time of the charter review. Thanks.
Yep. All right. Uh, another piece that's in the process, uh, portion of the code which we have today deals with minor modifications. That allows the staff to give twenty percent relief to various standards in the code. And that's something we use today, and we wanted to keep that in the code moving forward, because it seems to be fairly successful.
Uh, Rob, the, uh, twenty percent relief, it says from some standards. Can you tell us just several of the standards that, that you can't get twenty percent relief from with a minor modification?
Sure. You can't get relief from maximum height.
Okay.
So, that is, that's something that only council can do.
Right.
Um, you cannot get relief from, uh, trying to, I'm trying to think, I'm drawing a blank all of a sudden. Um, I can tell you what you can't get relief from.
You hit the good one right off the bat, though. That was.
Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of the big one.
What about setbacks?
Setbacks, we, you can do, you, we can, uh, we can modify those up to twenty percent. Setbacks, height, up to the height limit. So, if we have, in a couple of instances, we've had garages that, that just given this, the lay of the land, you know, we typically allow them to only be sixteen or eighteen feet. We have allowed some fair, very, uh, minor modifications there. Fences, we see a lot in terms of the setback, uh, adjacent to streets. Uh, sometimes we've had height, uh, exceptions, minor mo, sorry, height minor modifications to fences, to allow a seven-foot fence where a six-foot might not work. So, those are kind of the things that were allowed in the, or that are allowed for minor modifications.
Ms. Ford?
Rob, on the garages, what generally would, uh, give you an, or, um, provide an exception or, uh, establish a, a good reason for an exception on height for a garage?
That, we've seen some grade issues, um, where the grading just doesn't work for, uh, for, for, for one reason or another, to keep it within that height. We also have a, a kind of a, a provision in the code today that says, if you have a one-story house, you can only have a sixteen-foot tall garage. So, even if it's a one-story and that, you know, the, the height of the structure is eighteen or twenty feet, the main structure, you can still only have that sixteen-foot garage. So, we've had a couple of people ask for, uh, modifications to that, to allow a little bit of additional height, while still keeping it below the height of the main structure. Okay. All right, and then, uh, the PUD process. We are proposing to try and get away from, uh, PUDs as part of this effort. And so, and in terms of the new process, we would write some language that would talk about, uh, if you can do, your, if you can develop your project in any zone district that's part of the standard palette, you would not be allowed to try for a PUD. That's why we wanted to keep in the height exception, so that piece of it would come to council, but the rest of the process would still be, uh, administrative in, in a standard zone district. But we really want PUDs to be, uh, an out-of-the-ordinary, an extraordinary, uh, process. So, the, the example that, uh, keeps getting brought up is Topgolf. Don't have any zone district that really fits a project like Topgolf with their nets and driving ranges and buildings. And that would be something that if it came to the city, we would say, a PUD is the way to deal with that. Uh, and we would also, unlike today, not have set standards that you're modifying. It would be a negotiated prog, project, uh, which, in some ways, really makes it much simpler than trying to say, we've got a basic set of standards like we do today that don't really fit anything that we do as a PUD. So, everybody's always asking for modification from those set standards. Uh, and then it would require the public process. It would be just like a PUD today, neighborhood meetings, Planning Commission, City Council hearings. And we would still, uh, would like to keep the sketch plan option, so that people can get a quick pass at, uh, thoughts on projects before they actually submit a formal application. And the sketch plan, we may look at, um, applying in other situations as well. We're still trying to, to look at that option.
Okay, Mr. McGough, and then Mr. Marriott.
Yes, I was wondering, Mr. Marriott had suggested, uh, earlier that, um, the MXU, um, zone, uh, near, um, Lamar Marshall, uh, because of the uniqueness of that property, might be put into a PUD process, uh, so that we would not have to settle that question of height, uh, from the lower level to, or the upper level. Is the, is, could that be one of the criteria for the PUD process? Just, you know, some unique characteristic of the property? Or might there be, as was suggested by Mr. Marriott, that you review the possibility of the PUD being more appropriate for that MXU piece of property?
We can certainly look at, take a look at that, but, um, I would suggest that we, maybe we come back you, with, to you with a, a, a palette of options potentially for those properties, and maybe how we can deal with the height without forcing it into a PUD district. And there may be some things we can do to address, you know, a maximum height from the grade of Grandview Avenue. So, that, on the downhill side, we can get a, uh, maybe a taller structure, but it's a set height at the Grandview side. That way, we can maybe address both issues without putting it into the PUD.
That seems a reasonable thing to, to me, to come back with the options there, because I think the issue identified, Mr., by Mr. Marriott was, is a very real issue that we need to take into consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
So, I, this, uh, PUD process, I, I'm not necessarily against this, except I maybe and probably against the first statement there about, that it has to be an extraordinary development that cannot be approved in any other zoning district or combinations of districts. That, to me, seems to put, um, just an absolute ton of weight on these zone districts that we're talking about with this adoption of the Land Development Code, because if you can do a, it, it kind of stops you from asking for a PUD process if there's a way to do a development without it. And, um, I kind of like the idea of developers having a PUD process. I don't want it to be the only way we approve things, but I think that it beats site-specific zoning, you know, lot-by-lot specific zoning, which is, to me, the only way you can really fulfill that, that first bullet point on this list of stuff. So, I'm probably okay with this, except for that first bullet point, you know? I think I wouldn't make the PUD process that restrictive, because I think, in my time here on council, the PUD process has allowed us to do some better things than if we didn't have it available to us. And so, I wouldn't try to, try to really restrict it. I mean, I, I would try to encourage developers to not use it, but, but when they have either a, a really better project, a real compelling reason to, or can deliver a much better project, you know, I think we currently in the PUD project require them to have, um, there's got to be some value added for the, the city or the community as a whole for a PUD to take place. And I think we ought to, we ought to keep that option open. So, I don't know, again, that's kind of a fine line, but I think this particular one, I would have, I'd have a bit of problem there with the first one, just, just the, just with the aggressiveness that it tries to keep development away from the PUD process. And just by example, you know, we talked about that Ralston Road, uh, area there in the MXU, I think, district. I would rather see that, that not be allowed by right, the buildings of that height, and in the lot, the, the site-specific places where it is appropriate, I'd rather see those as a, a PUD, because that gives the community plenty to weigh in on. It gives a incentive for a developer who can deliver something better, might want to go through a PUD process, but yet doesn't just open that whole area up to what might be inappropriate development, so that you can get appropriate development on some of it. You know, you know what I'm saying? It, it's kind of maybe being a little more restrictive, and you can ask for some freedom from the restrictions, rather than making it way less restrictive, so nobody has to ask for, for, for freedom from the restrictions. So, I, I'd suggest we work on that a little bit, just that process question, a little bit about how difficult would it be for someone to apply for a PUD and not have it quite so, quite so cold as saying you can't even apply for a PUD if you can develop within the existing district.
Okay, yeah, we would, the, the intent is to give some direction. We would never say you can't apply for a PUD, because that's part of the due process, uh, piece. But, yeah, I, I see what you're, see what you're saying.
Mr. McGough?
Yeah, so I was just going to add to that, that, um, it, it might possibly be the, uh, there might be a necessity to just change that language, um, so that, in some way, we're stating that there should be a compelling reason presented for, you know, compelling rationale for not fitting into one of the other zoning districts, rather than the language as we currently have it. Because even as you responded to Mr. Marriott's question, you indicated that it's not truly the intent to deny, you know, a, a PUD, uh, under the wording that we currently have. So, perhaps a, a tweaking of some language to reflect the intent that you shared with us.
Sure. And, and this was actually, this isn't language that we're talking about in the code, this was just kind of a way to portray it, but I, I do like your language as well. Thanks.
Right.
Okay.
Next part.
All right. Next part. Just wanted to run through quickly, kind of the ideas, uh, we've got in terms of design standards, just to give you a flavor for what we're working on. We will definitely come back to you with a ton more design standards as we put the code together. But this is primarily to give some idea in those MX districts, what we're talking about in terms of design standards for the different context, that being the neighborhood. Primarily, what we're showing here are the suburban, urban transit. So, for an example, a gas station. In a suburban district, the one on the left, you can basically, you could potentially do a gas station like you'd see anywhere today. Gas pumps up against the street, the convenience building is towards the back, parking and circulation around the building, fairly typical of what you'd see in a suburban setting. In the mixed-use district, potentially, we're talking about how, making the, requiring the building to be built up to the street, with the pumps off to the side or the rear, so that you get a more pedestrian-oriented environment in those areas. And then, in the transit, we don't want to necessarily preclude any, any use, we want to make sure it's a use that's, and a design that's compatible. So, in this example, you'd have the building up to the street, and if a gas station were looking to go in a transit location, the pumps would just have to be behind the building. And that, in some ways, we've had people say, well, that means you may not be able to, to do that. And that may be the case, but there may be sites where you are able to do that. So, that's kind of some, some thoughts in terms of, you know, an example of a gas station. Uh, the next one is an example of a, potentially, a fast-food restaurant. Again, where you've got, uh, your typical suburban design on the left, uh, in the urban in the middle, you get the driveline on the side of the building with the building up to the street. And then in transit, uh, you have a drive-through that's potentially through the building. And we have a great example of that with the Community Bank in Old Town, where they were able to do that. And it really kind of fits in with the context without making the, the drive-through element apparent, uh, and without really kind of destroying that streetscape. Um, so, those are kind of a couple of examples.
Yes. I, I, I kind of like what you're getting at with this one. My only suggestion would be in the transit one, instead of requiring that the drive-through can only go through the building, it might just be that it has to go on the back of the building. In other words, you've got the suburban one, the drive-through can be on the front, could be on the back, could be on the side, could be on the front. On the, the more urban one, it can't be in the front, essentially. And then, on the, in the transit one, maybe it just can't be on the front or the side, but it can be in the back.
Sure.
But that seems really restrictive if it can only go through a building, that it might be better off to have a little more flexibility there.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, these were just examples of some of the thoughts we're, we're exploring. Okay? Uh, and then, as it relates to landscaping, right now, our code says, if your, if your use is residential, or let's say, commercial, and you're adjacent to residential, there's a specific buffer width you have to be, a specific number of trees and shrubs you have to provide, and it varies by different types of uses that are adjacent to one another when they're developed. Uh, we would rather propose just a palette of options for any adjacency for uses that may seem a little bit incompatible. Uh, but that would allow an option, uh, for a development to look at, let's say, if they have a lot of space on the property, maybe they go through Option A, which is a fairly large landscape buffer with a, a modest amount of landscaping. If they've got a smaller site, maybe they pick Option C, which requires a fence, more intense landscaping, but a smaller buffer width. Or all the way to what is shown here is Option D, where they really have a really small parcel, but a six-foot masonry wall would actually provide the buffering that's necessary for that adjacent use. So, it would just give a palette of options versus, uh, forcing one specific type of buffer, depending on your uses. And then, the, the last piece on this is just to show some examples where we might want to say, within the mixed-use districts and primarily transit, where we really want to have activated street frontage, and maybe retail is the most appropriate use in the long run for a particular building, a particular piece of property. But when it's developed, uh, you know, as redevelopment occurs, there may be opportu, or locations where we really want that retail long-term, but in the short term, there's just not a lot of pedestrian traffic to generate that retail. We would just say that you just have to design the space to accommodate retail in the future, but in the interim, it could be office, it could be, um, additional residential units if it's a residential building. But we wanted to say, over the long term, we would like to see that particular location transition to retail, for example. And so, it just needs to be designed to accommodate in that, in the future, which is sometimes a little different building code regulation than, let's say, a residential structure. So, that's one of the ideas that we've been toying with as well. And those would be in fairly limited situations, again, in the transit primarily.
Ms. Fiver?
Yeah, I don't like that one, because once it's residential, always be, I think of Century, the Century Building by the mayor's house, those mixed-use, we put across from Coles on Sixty-Fourth. I did drive through the parking lot, and only one's a business, all the rest are used as residential. I know the whole idea was it was supposed to be mixed-use at the bottom floor of that building. If you, if you allow them to put in residential, it will always be residential. So, I, I think we need to approach that with caution. I know you said it's limited use, so I don't know how big of a deal this would be, but once you say it could be one thing, it, it may never change. I, I just can't see somebody saying, well, I'm going to rip out all the bathrooms, the kitchen, and these expensive amenities that I just put in to, to put in a raw, um, retail tile store. Can't see, I can't see any building owner thinking of ripping out a residential area to turn it in like that. It doesn't make sense to me, so let's put some common sense, uh, around that a little bit more. I, I just have some issues with that. I mean, do you, do you envision that somebody's going to rip out the kitchen and the, the bathroom and say, yeah, now I'm going to sell tiles here?
It is something that other communities have experimented with, and to varying degrees of success.
Do you have examples of those?
Uh, I can get some. Uh, I know that, uh, Salt Lake City has done something similar. You know, again, it's, it's maybe a little different context in terms of the, the scale and scope of the urban development, but we would be only talking about fairly specific locations where we really think a pedestrian environment would be important. Uh, for example, in, uh, the Newtown area, along Old Wadsworth, south of the tracks. Maybe it's an appropriate place over time to have the extension of the pedestrian environment and retail environment of Old Town, kind of extend that way. So, that would be one area where we were looking at potentially this.
I think if we were successful in our current mixed-use, I don't feel we're as successful, this, these are just my opinions, of course. I don't think we're as successful when we say mixed-use, and I use, I, I know there's several that we, we put together, and if I saw that we can actually get resi, or, uh, commercial at a first level, storefront level, and, and living above, or offices above. or offices above, and we actually saw that, then maybe we would have some experience in that area. Right now, I feel we fall short in enforcing our zoning, in particular the Century Community Homes.
So your thought is to require it to be from day one?
Yeah, if we're going to do it, mixed-use, that first floor should at least be offices or retail. It needs to be like employment-type center and then put living above. I just don't, I just, I feel like if we're too loose in saying, well, you can do whatever you want to do today, and then maybe when things change, could you please maybe do something different, maybe kind of? I just, I don't see, then what's our role? What's our purpose? What's, what are we trying to solve here? I don't, I don't, I just don't like that.
Yeah, I think if, you know, and of course, the developer of that project had me recuse myself on it, but it has been an abject failure of being a true live-work, you know, mixed-use project. And that's how they, you know, shoehorned in getting approval for that, was that they were going to do it and they haven't done it. And I have to drive by it every day and it drives me up the wall.
All right. Okay. So then kind of the direction is if we have some specific locations where we really want mixed-use, we need to make sure?
Yeah, I think you can look at, now I haven't been down there in a long time, but the old Elych Gardens area tried to do this as well. And as I recall, in days past, it didn't work there either. People just used it as living space rather than.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, I mean, Five Parks, you know, they've done a relatively good job.
Right.
It's a smaller space, but they've done a relatively good job of keeping that mixed-use the same way. I mean, when you brought this slide up, my first thought was the Century Homes project. And so the mayor and Bob have said exactly my thoughts, but that felt like it was, I liked your word, shoehorned in, because they promised something that now they're not going to be able to take back. So I think that we have to be pretty directive in this mixed-use application. I love walking through a streetscape like this and having businesses and, I mean, Grand Lake, you know, when you walk down Grand Lake, it's, most of those buildings are mixed-use now. And it's just, it's awesome. And so, you know, it gives the person who lives and works there an opportunity to interact with the community. So I think, let's be prescriptive on this one.
Okay.
I didn't say it as nice as my peers, but let me ask about that, that Five Parks. I recall that was all commercial in that area, and then we changed it where we allowed living above, which was a great idea, but I thought it was all commercial. But I can see something like that happening and coming back where, hey, it was all, the whole commercial building didn't pan out, we'll keep the bottom floor commercial, but okay.
I think it was always, my recollection was.
Because I didn't know, was it?
The intent was, when they were doing that, was the developer of that, really wanted to have a downtown mixed-use. So they started and they generate the money themselves, they built the commercial and leased it out or whatever, but now they're adding the residential on the second.
Above.
Yeah, and those are the builders, the people that own the restaurants now are the ones living upstairs. But the intent was, but it was a slow process.
But was that always intended to be residential upstairs or just was slow to get there?
Yeah, the intent was to have some commercial with the mixed-use, but it didn't take off. So the zoning was PUD, BPR, but it took a long time to do it. But it wasn't necessarily the whole building was going to be, there were different aspects of it. Candela's tried to do that as well, but they wanted to do mixed-use buildings, but that has not happened. And, you know, we were trying to encourage them to start like what they did in Village of Hyde Park, get that going, but that didn't work. So it was many years before the Village of Park actually did the mixed-use buildings.
Yeah, when we talk about livable, walkable communities, I envision walking on the streetscape and patronizing the businesses and knowing my community leadership and members that are, you know, very effective contributors to our community. And I think that that's what makes us a community when you have that. And when that goes away, then we all end up at our home and we all get our Amazon deliveries, right? So I'm just an advocate of trying to get that hometown feeling that we are so proud of, to preserve whatever type of opportunities we have, to keep that there, you know? That's what makes us special and unique.
We need more Ed and Mauro Demmers who have a great, you know, bakery and then live above it, so.
All right. Okay. The last thing tonight is just to mention that we have kind of tweaked the short-term rentals and put together kind of a bullet list. I think this is almost identical to what you saw the last time. And as I mentioned earlier, we will be having a more in-depth study session on this. We've got legal kind of looking at putting together an ordinance, and once we have that ordinance put together, we'll bring that back to you.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I had a very informative conversation today with Mr. and Mrs. Schiffler, and we were talking about the Airbnb that's right next door to their house. And something I hadn't thought of, and I thought was great, was, well, the first part isn't great, that people come to Colorado and rent Airbnb spaces to do recreational drugs. It's what they do, because they can't do it in a hotel. So my thought was, I don't do that, so it's not in my mindset. So my thought was, could we include in that code, and I don't know if this is something for Mr. Daley, that it's non-smoking of marijuana, non-recreational drug use inside the short-term rental?
It's an interesting idea, I'd like to study it. I'm not sure if I can give you an answer tonight, but I'd like to study that issue.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, several of us have met with, very nice couple. They've been great in terms of doing cleanup in Old Town around the, oh, great, good to see you again. And so, yes, I think balancing that versus the whole issue of, does it have to be the primary residence of the property owners, where I think we've got some battles going on and we need to figure that out, so.
So, yeah, so we just wanted to touch base on this because we know we'll bring it to you and have a more robust discussion on that in the future.
Right, yeah, we're not there yet on this one.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I know Mr. Daley's going to look into it, but it's my understanding that owners are allowed to grow marijuana on their property by law. So I don't know if, I guess we're allowed to change that in each community, I suppose, if we're not allowed to have it. But I, getting back to that owner, owner versus primary resident situation, after the last meeting, I did a little research online and I noticed that two communities, the owner occupied was, in one, you had to have, you could only have it a short-term rental be if it was owner occupied. In the case of Fort Collins, I noticed they have some districts where it can be owner occupied and then some where it's, you know, you just have to, you have to be the primary resident. So they have a variation. But they also had restrictions on where they could be within the city. I looked up Golden and Lakewood and I don't know if anything's changed since what was on the internet, but they were still investigating the situation, so it didn't look like they had come up with anything. I still would like to see some information. I know we went over it a little bit in the land development code advisory meeting, but I'd like to see what other communities, how they've written this. Because I definitely am very concerned that if anybody can buy a house and just have it as a short-term rental, there's some potential effects that could be detrimental. And, you know, another thing that I was wondering is if, you probably can't do a limitation, but I, maybe this wouldn't happen, but I could see somebody coming in and maybe wanting to have short-term rentals within, you know, a whole bunch within a certain area. And, you know, and given our housing crisis at the moment, we have so little houses available for people to actually live in them, that might have some negative impacts in the future.
Yeah, and there are a variety of models out there. Owner occupied, you know, is quite common. In resort communities, whole house is quite common. I believe, if I remember right, Denver requires an owner to live there. I mean, so that's one of our major cities, that's how they go, but you go up to resort communities. So it's kind of all over. It's really, you know, going to come down to what you think is best for Arvada on how to handle that particular situation. We do also see communities that have, I believe you, Loretta, you might be able to answer this, some communities had spacing limits.
Durango?
Yeah, so we have seen communities that have spacing limits to limit, you know, kind of that buy a whole row of houses type situation.
Well, I don't know how my other council colleagues feel, but I think that tourist towns like Breckenridge, for example, or, you know, lake towns like Grand Lake or, to me, they're a little different than Arvada because people generally don't buy in Arvada because of, you know, we, most people probably don't buy in Arvada because of, you know, the reservoirs that we have here or, I just see it a little differently. I think of, you know, I think of my home state of New Jersey, for example, where the seaside resorts had a lot of rentals, but that was common. You anticipated that they would have a lot of rentals. It was a different living environment. I wouldn't compare it with Arvada. So I think we have to compare like with like.
Mr. Marriott?
I know we've had this discussion once, but I just wanted to reiterate what my position on it would be. And that's, I think it's important for people who make an investment in a home to, you know, have use of that property. And I picture myself, one of the things I would like to do someday is trade six months in my house for six months in somebody else's house, hopefully in Tuscany or somewhere like that. But I would sure be, I would be very upset if my local ordinances didn't allow me to do that, whether it was for a week or a month or six months. And I think, I understand their individual situations by which either may not be ideal because of the personalities involved, or there certainly you can imagine situations about anything where there's, where it may not be ideal. But on the other hand, I would hate to see us eliminate the possibility for some better situations because we're fearful of some of these other situations. I kind of like the idea of not allowing marijuana use, particularly outside in a short-term rental, if that's a doable thing, you know? I think things, I think we may be better off approaching it that way than any other way. And so, I mean, I think, I have traveled around and rented other people's houses fairly extensively. I haven't ever rented mine like that, but I've rented other people's houses. And I can tell you this, it's not very comfortable to rent somebody else's house and have them there. I don't know why, we don't do anything wrong, but it's, you know, it's like, it's like sitting in the principal's office or something, I don't know. And so I think this is a place that the market has some really good things about it, and one of them is when people have the flexibility to get the use of their property that's appropriate to them. And I'd like us, I would sure like us particularly as we first start restricting short-term rentals, which while they're maybe technically not allowed now, there certainly is no enforcement of the not allowed, that we apply those rules to it carefully to deal with, to deal with conditions that actually exist and not conditions that we can imagine might exist. So that'd be my, my approach would be the less restrictive, certainly at the beginning, if we have specific problems, we maybe address those as we go.
All right. So then next up is just the next steps. Like I said, we'll get back to you on the short-term rentals, we'll have a work session on that. The next advisory committee is at the end of July. And then, as I mentioned, we will have a draft for you by the end of August, the first review draft, followed by an open house at the beginning of September to introduce that draft to the public. And you can always follow the process through our open houses, through our website, and through our social media posts.
Great. Let me again open it up to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things that, kind of the details that didn't come out in this, and one thing about the short-term rentals, I think it was discussed at a previous joint workshop, limit the number of permits that somebody can have within the city if we're just concerned about some of those extensive use of properties. I did want to say on the, there was a note that we're going to expand the 400-feet distance from a project to a greater distance. I think that's wonderful, five, 600 feet. But I think we can add some things in the land development code that would increase people's awareness of a project nearby. The city has done such a good job of registering homeowners groups and neighborhood groups, and let's require a developer to send notices to those groups that are close to a project that may impact them. They could be six or eight blocks away, but they want to be involved. And I think we also should use the online platforms. The city promotes Nextdoor as one of those things, and let's find those, there's a Nextdoor secret near me, and let's find those online platforms. I don't think anybody would say having too much neighborhood and community involvement is a negative on any project that we have. And one last thing I would just say, and this was on, in a table, it wasn't something that was going to be changed, but I saw it as a footnote in a table about two of the mixed-use districts. And this footnote said, and I quote, "Rooftop and upper-level deck amenities can be counted toward the open space requirement." And that concerns me because open space is typically at ground level. It's green, it's planted, not always, but typically it is. And I don't want to see us give up that open space and the green space, the shading and those kind of things that we need around buildings and allow a developer to provide it only to his tenants and his residents, and we lose that open space that is really for the citizens of Arvada. Thank you.
Anything else from the planning commission, folks? Again, thank you all for being here tonight and thanks for your hard work on behalf of all of us. We do greatly appreciate it. Anything else from council?
Yeah.
Mr. Fivert?
Rob, and team and all the employees and the committee, I mean, I know these are long nights and healthy discussions and I think Nancy Ford and everyone for, you know, one bite at a time getting through it, because the nights can go, the conversations can get very, very, very long. And so I appreciate those long nights.
We appreciate all of our advisory committee members who have gone through this with us.
Great. Okay, and we've heard what the next steps are. Mr. Devon, anything else you've got for us tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we stand adjourned.